Thank you. Good evening, the city of Boston Board of Appeal hearing for June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March two thousand and twenty-five. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being reported. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. For members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video. You went too fast. Video on while presenting to the board. All right. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comments. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called upon, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Okay, Miss, Mr. Stenbridge.
Good evening, Madam Chair, fellow board members.
Good evening, Ms. Weewell.
Hi, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To start off with, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this evening's proceeding? If, if so.
Christopher raising your hand for that?
Ah, yes, good evening, Chairman of the Board. I'm I'm here on behalf of thirty-six G Street requesting a deferral.
Mr. Stenbridge, do you want to call that into the record?
That would be a request for a deferral for case BOA one four one two five four six. The address being thirty-six G Street.
Ah, thank you. Again, James Christopher, six eight six architects here on behalf of the owners. There were some changes to the plans during the community process, which I realized this evening were not refiled with ISD for the re-review. As such, I've requested a deferral in order to have the plans re-reviewed so that they're properly advertised for these hearings.
Thank you. Are you seeking the next available subcommittee date or, or general board meeting?
Ah, I would whichever comes first.
Uh, okay, Samantha?
Uh, Madam Chair, this is Javier.
Oh, Javier, sorry.
I know, you're fine. Um. I'm just double checking the next subcommittee would be July twentieth.
That would work for us.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer the hearing for thirty-six G Street until July twentieth.
Wait, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for your time.
Any further requests for withdrawals or deferral?
Hi, folks. This is Dan Hudson from the Office Neighborhood Services, the mayor's West Roxbury, and I'm not seeing the applicant in here for twenty-six Ansonia Road. Oh, I believe that's him, actually, Sean Brady. We're going to request a referral for twenty-six Ansonia Road to complete the public process. These guys are going to meet with the sorry about that. These folks are going to meet with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council later this month, and then we will come back. I believe I worked out a date. I think with Stephanie, I think there's a date available, June eleventh, but we can confirm that.
July eleventh, Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry, July eleven. Thank you.
So can we read the case into the record and can we just have the applicant follow that by confirming that he's seeking a deferral?
So that would be a request for a deferral of case BOA one four two seven three, with the address being twenty-six Ansonia Road.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Can you put your name and address into the, into the record?
Yep, I'm homeless Sean Brady. My address is twenty-six Ansonia Road in West Roxbury. Requesting a deferral because of the community meeting on the twenty-seventh, and next day will be July eleventh, I believe.
Perfect, thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to defer to July eleventh.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Um, first.
I just need you to say yes.
I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry to jump ahead, Madam Chair. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Okay, the chair votes yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Moving on to the rest of the hearing now. First being case BOA one four two two seven three seven, with the address being one sixty-six to one sixty-eight Bayswater Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, good afternoon, Secretary and Madam Chair and the board members. My name is Bahadneh Alhansin. I'm the architect for the project.
Great. Can you walk us through the proposal and the violation? Thank you.
Great. So what we're seeing on the screen here, the four images. Uh, we have a two-family on, at one sixty-six Bayswater, and the owner lives on the second floor. And the request is to expand the second floor unit into the attic to make it livable space with an extra bedroom. The current plan shows two bedrooms, but the interior layout is changing, but that does not affect the outside at all. And the plan is simply to rebuild the entire roof. It's currently a hip roof. The plan calls to rebuild the entire roof as a gable with a small deck on the front side and a, a, a single bedroom and some additional living space and a bathroom in the attic space with a dormer. And this is, of course, part of the second unit. We're not you'd have to go through the second floor unit to get to the attic. So clearly, this is part of the second floor unit. It just becomes a two-story unit. You can see the form of the gable from every angle there on that sheet. Uh, there's a bit of an open opening in the roof just to keep the gable form, yet have some open air and deck space towards the front. If you scroll up just a little bit, you can see the front side. Uh, they're on the right side, and the second and the fourth one from the left uh, showed the upper level deck and the dormers on either side for the living space inside the attic. Part of the plan also calls for two decks, one at the first floor and one at the second floor, just to really square off the corner of the building where you can see the steep staircase coming into the building. Uh, there's an entrance bump out, and the new deck on the upper left of the plan there shows one on the first floor and one on the second floor, just as an as a deck on the front of the house to get to enjoy the views. The only issue there is that the top, the further topmost corner on the left of that new deck infringes on the setback by about six inches. So that's part of the relief that we're seeking, and of course, the attic itself, the doors are required to get approval here. We've been through the neighborhood council and everything's been approved and all questions were answered. And that's the, that's the summary.
That sounds good. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. At this time, the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information in the community process. I understand that our office is unaware of any concerns from abutters at this time, that the applicant met with the Orient Heights Neighborhood Association, which voted to support this proposal. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Any other raised hands?
No raised hands, Madam Chair.
One question, one question, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
The occupancy of the unit of the structure change?
I'm sorry, is the question, is there a change to the occupancy?
Yes.
There is no change to occupancy.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with a proviso for BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Next, we have case BOA one four five five three two. The address of five thirty to five thirty-two Commonwealth Avenue. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kevin Sweet from TSG Consulting, representing our client Bean Town Donuts LLC with regards to five thirty, five thirty-two Commonwealth Avenue.
Great. And it's, and just what are you seeking?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, we're, we're seeking to remove the proviso that was granted to the prior petitioner and grant to Bean Town Donuts LLC. Um, this project is simply an ownership change. There's no, no additional changes beyond the ownership. My client, the Pesky Network is, is a franchisee Duncan owner, owner-operator of about forty locations throughout the Commonwealth, including others in Boston. Uh, we've, we've made no changes to the operations, staff, or building. It's again simply an ownership change.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. At this time, the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, some background, background information in the community process. Uh, our office had the applicant reach out to a butters with no changes in operations. There were no concerns raised, and they also contacted the Kenmore Civic Association as well. Run aware of any concerns at this time. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
No raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to, to approve?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, members. Have a good night.
Next, we have case BOA one four four six three 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 one. The address being seven sixty-one East Broadway. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, John Moran Alpine Advisory Services, representing the applicants. Uh, Madam Chair, this is a single-family owner-occupied building. The owners seek to enlarge the occupant, the structure by adding dormers, which is shown on the face. Uh, the dormers are an alteration to the roof, which requires a conditional use permit. Additionally, there is a rear addition that is set back uh, one foot from the adjoining property at seven fifty-nine. And the proposal is to reconstruct the addition by adding two stories and moving it back to be in alignment with the main building. The main building is set back two feet. The code requires a three-foot setback. Uh, this is an existing condition. The home will have four bedrooms to provide each bedroom for the applicant's three children. There are no bedrooms in the basement. With that, I would answer any question.
Mr. Moran, quick clarification. I, I heard you say initially that there's a, a one foot between your, your, this property and seven fifty-nine and your addition. Uh, your renovation would alter that to two feet different?
Two feet, which would be in alignment with the main building.
Okay, so, so it actually is a less of a, it's further away from your neighbor by a foot.
Correct.
Okay.
Let's fill a one-foot violation.
Yes, thank you. Uh, any questions from the board?
Mine's more, sorry, Ma'am Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, you know, the driveway with here, it looks, you know, between the two structures on this lot, the lot, the structure on this lot and to the left. Is it, it's six point seven feet? Is that correct?
If I could ask the architect, I'm trying to.
So, ye- yes, so to the, to the property line, it's about six feet, but in reality, between seven sixty-one and seven sixty-three here, this is all pavement. So, yes, their property lines here, but really, they get up until the building is all paved to the button building.
Yeah, I think in my experience, this is a pretty narrow, um, drive aisle for one vehicle, but I'm also you know, so this addition will have a garage in it. Has, how, has there been any like turning movements done with?
There, there has. We recently going through construction permit drawings, we actually had a civil engineer do a turning radius study because we had those concerns and the owner had the concerns as well. So, uh, we did have that done.
Has that been reviewed by BPD to your knowledge?
Not, no, that's been, that's been held in-house between us.
Okay.
But this is an existing driveway that's been in use for, I don't know how long, but at, at least this century, if not significantly earlier. There is an existing curb cut in an existing driveway.
Okay. Those are my questions for now, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, I actually have one raised hand.
Okay.
I have two now. Brian? You've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Brian O'Donnell. Um, I am the nephew of Gina O'Donnell, who lives at seven sixty-three East Broadway. Um, and she is unable to attend. Um, we sent an email earlier yesterday um, to be reviewed by the board, and we just have concerns about the overall size of the addition and how it impacts um, our house on, uh, the side of the building um, in regards to, you know, shade, uh, sunlight. And I think it comes a little bit closer to our side on that driveway side.
Okay, and you noted, I think, Mr. O'Donnell noted, uh, your three stories, and uh, can you clarify just how close you are to seven sixty-three? And is there a change from your current to your proposed condition? Mr. Moran, sorry, yeah.
Um.
Madam Chair, there's no change to the main building.
Right.
So our new addition is coming approximately three feet closer to his property versus what the existing one-story structure is in the back.
Um, Francis, did you indicate another raised hand?
Yes, Madam Chair, yes. All right. Zoom user? You've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and I call them from Council President Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on recording support. Thank you.
Thank you.
And no other raised hands. And Madam Chair from, for the mayor's office, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have a lot of information on this proposal. It is on his out, and I think we were under the impression that this proposal was going to be deferred. Uh, communication that Stephanie Haynes had with the applicant uh, in late May of May twenty-fourth seemed due to revised plans and additional violation was added. Uh, please request a deferral to a later date so it can be re-advertized. I don't know if that's in reference to this particular hearing or previous hearing. My apologies. Like I said, I, I don't have a lot of information for this.
Madam, Madam Chair, if I can address that, the second submission was withdrawn, and the owners did not wish to go forward. They're anxious uh, to have the construction start to accommodate their family. Uh, at the site meeting, there was no opposition. The president of the City Point Castle Island Association spoke in favor. The most affected abutter at seven fifty-nine is in support of the project. And unfortunately, uh, the owner next door has been ill and was not available uh, to be contacted, my understanding. Uh, she was in the hospital. I, I, that's my understanding. I, I can stand to be corrected on that now.
Sure, I guess, uh, my follow-up question, obviously, that a butter is on the call and had some concerns. And so can you just clarify from your perspective why one abutter is more affected than the other, since it sounds like you're, you're inching closer to one than the other?
Well, the abutter most affected is the abutter that has the two-foot setback. And that is seven fifty-nine. Uh, that's, that's the existing condition, and the rear addition is being moved back, which the current addition is one foot setback from her property line. Uh, it's being reconstructed to be two feet in alignment with the, the main house. And I might add that the, the addition is to the rear of the property. And the main building is, height is not being changed. The height remains the same.
Yeah. Any other questions from, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Newman?
Sorry, Madam Chair, just getting information in, in real time. Can confirm that the Civic Association for that area, City Point, was in support. Um, the prime, the only real concern that was raised in the butters meeting was apparently there's a home improvement show that will be filmed at that location, so residents just ask to be kept in the loop if that goes forward. Uh, and we did also receive a letter of support from a resident in South Boston as well. Um, so with that information, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have another question. Um, this is to the architect. Can, so are they proposing to pave the bulk of the backyard where there was stone patio and landscaping?
Yes, bulk of that is going to be paved. There is going to be a small area to the back where they have that existing garden shed that there will be the landscaped area, but bulk of it will be pavement. And then, with asphalt, yeah, a asphalt permeable surface will decide that.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do you want BPD design review?
Um, motion to approve with BP design review.
May, may I add a proviso and seconding?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So I would add the BPDA designer view, but also with the intention of reducing, um, impervious area.
Mr. Stenbridge, do you accept that addition to your?
Yes, I, yes, I do, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, uh, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA one four three eight two eight one. The address of being one fifty-five Dorchester Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present? Yes.
Can you introduce yourself, put your name to the record and, uh, proceed?
Yep, Frank Knippenberg, representing the applicants with Boston Permit Advisors. I'm joined by Nick Landry, the architect on the project. Uh, this project is to take an existing single family, uh, that is currently a five-bedroom building and split it into two units uh, with four bedrooms in the upper unit and then a one-bedroom in the garden unit. Um, as part of that, we would be adding additional egress into the garden unit. And adding, you know, kitchen and bathroom, or adding a kitchen. It already has a bathroom down there. It would be accessible via that side alley. And we have worked with, uh, the director butters to, uh, come to agreement on improvements to the alley to provide suitable access to the unit.
Can you confirm, is there, is there a livable space currently in the basement, or are you?
Yes, correct, there is. There's currently a bedroom and a bathroom down there.
Okay. Any other questions from, I'm sorry, were you still presenting?
No, I'm good unless you have any other questions for us.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Uh, the base, the bedroom in the basement will remain.
Correct, yep.
So you're converting the basement itself into a separate unit? You're not?
Yeah, we're essentially removing the interior staircase to access that basement and adding an additional egress on the side of the building.
Okay. Okay, uh, hearing no question, other questions from the board? May, uh, we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman from the mayor's office of neighborhood services. At this time, the mayor's office would defer to the judgment of this board. Our office conducted an abutters meeting on March sixth. Um, the applicant answered questions that a direct abutters had and worked in close communication with them on that alleyway, the shared alleyway. Uh, they also answered questions from the counselor's office as well, and we're in contact with the local civic association. Our office is unaware of any concerns at this time. With that, we'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and I call them from Council President Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on recording support. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, with that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the proviso that no building code relief be granted.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA one four one nine seven five six. The address being eleven Plainfield Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, this is, uh, Tom Malone, general contractor.
And I'm also here, I'm the homeowner. Um, my husband is with our kids, but he, I think he's on the call as well, unmuted. My name is Felicia Kizer.
Thank you. Is one of, is Mr. Malone walking us through this?
Yeah, I'm.
Yes, Mr. Malone will walk. Thank you.
Yeah, again, my name's Tom Malone, sixteen R St. John Street, Jamaica Plain, uh, representing David Vitali Wolf and Felicia Kizer for eleven Plainfield Street in Jamaica Plain. Um, essentially, on this project, what we're planning on doing is extending a dormer um, to the rear of the house in an area currently occupied by a flat roof um, to make a new family room. It's an owner-occupied two-family, um, three-bedroom that's going to stay a three-bedroom. We're in violation on the side yard um, for the setback, which is an existing violation in the current house, and the building for, uh, footprint is not going to change. And we're also a little over on the floor area ratio, um, from point seven to point eight-five, which is why we're seeking relief.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, can we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. At this time, the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information in the community process. Our office held a butter. Some background information on the community process. Our office held an abutters meeting on January nineteenth. The applicant went on to meet with the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association where they were approved. And then on March, that was on March thirteenth, excuse me, and then they followed up by meeting with the JPNC zoning subcommittee on April twelfth. We had no letters of opposition at this time. We'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised?
Hands, Madam Chair.
Perfect. Thank you, Francis. With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
You want BPDA design review or?
Um. If I don't feel that strongly on it, but if the chairwoman or Mr. Stembridge would like to suggest that, I'm happy to support that.
I would just maybe as a matter of practice and they can decide if they don't want to review it.
Right, so motion to approve with a proviso BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. We will.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one four five zero zero eight two. The address being one sixty-two, one seventy-two South Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee. Richard Lins, two forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston, behalf of the petitioner. That is a very straightforward proposal. We scroll down to this space here. Yeah, perfect. Some pre-existing commercial building located Jamaica Plain on the corner of Rosemary and South Street. Does contain a total of five commercial spaces. One of those spaces is vacant. It was last used for a locksmith shop. Our proposal would be to change the occupancy from the last known use of locksmith to a florist with no other changes to the building itself. Because this is located at three F five thousand district, the building is already a pre-existing, legally pre-existing non-conforming use. Any change to the uses in this building are conditional and therefore require conditional use permit from the board. So a very relatively straightforward substituted non-conforming use. We're taking the locksmith use away and adding the floor shop, which was pretty well received by the surrounding neighborhood. The only outstanding issue which typically comes up in these situations is signage. And certainly, any signage that would be added to the building would be required to comply with the BPDA expedited review for signage. So not necessarily a designer view, but any signage that would require a separate short form permit that gets approved through BPD review and located with a sign in the building. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lins. Good to see you outside of East Boston.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This time the mayor's office would defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. Our office facilitated an abutters meeting on April twenty-seventh. The applicant then went on to meet with the JPNC and acquire their support on May thirty-first. Throughout the process, there was overwhelming community support for this business concept. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
No raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Go ahead, Norm.
I'll make a motion for approval with the review of outs, outside changes. Including signage.
May I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. We will.
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA one four four eight five one two. The address being thirty-nine Vernon Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present?
I don't have anyone checked off for that.
Okay, why don't we keep going and if they come in later, we'll we'll, we'll hear them.
With that, we will move on to case BOA one four four five 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 seven. The address being two twenty-four Willow Street. It's the applicant and or their representative present.
Hello, my name is Brendan Basil. I am the homeowner of two twenty-four Willow Street.
Do you want to walk us through?
Sure. So what we are looking to do is add a dormer to our attic to create more space for a bedroom and a bathroom. The issue has been is that there's a pre-existing setback that is in violation that we're looking for the relief from.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Dan Hudson, the West Roxbury liaison from the office of neighborhood services. We had our butters meeting April sixth. There were some concerns about height, but we were able to determine that this wouldn't increase the height and it wouldn't affect shadows more than the current structure of the home already does. That said, this was passed unanimously by the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council. They have completed public process, but we will defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Other raised hands?
No raised hands. Oh, sorry. Richard, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please. Richard?
Okay. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. We will.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one four five zero seven zero one. The address being thirty-three to thirty-five Shaw Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present?
Sorry, terrible lighting over here. Apologies.
Hi, I'm a, thirty-three to reply, choice three, West Roxbury. And we just tried to extend the living space from the second floor to the attic. The attic is already, everything is, the dorms, everything is all set. It's just closing that up and bathroom and a kitchen net. That's it.
Are those like handwritten? Plans?
Yes.
Javier, was that approved by your?
Yes.
Your folks?
So if they have the stamp approval, I'm sorry, I can't see any of those approved stamped by ISD. Can, can you keep scrolling? I just, just can't see it. I believe it's on the right-hand corner.
That says denied. I don't know what that.
The drawing was not specifically denied. I believe the plans were initially denied for other violations, but not the drawing itself. Also, hi, my name is Alex. I am the applicant's son.
Ms. We will, have you reviewed these?
I have, and I would agree with the BPDA's recommendation to defer. I had a hard time reviewing and kind of orienting myself with the proposed project. You know, they were quite labeled of, you know, right, left elevations, things like that. And I think the BPDA also noted documentation of existing and proposed conditions insufficient at the time of review, and I would agree with that. I think we need a little more information here.
Could we clarify on? Is exactly?
Can you say that again?
Sorry, I'm just seeking clarification on, on, on.
What it is you need additional information on?
I think just the quality of the plans, it's a little hard to tell what's going on. Typically, we see the whole scope of the structure. And, you know, not just a section of it, we usually see existing and proposed. And they're usually labeled, we know which elevations they are, so I think just a little bit more detail is required here. I'm not sure if there's anyone from the BPDA you can connect with that can give you guidelines for this, but I I would agree with their assessment that they're at this point.
Because it was nothing structural. Everything is, is ready right there. I, they told me I don't need a plans. They say it's making throw right there, the size, whatever.
I'm sorry, pause, Mr. Rodriguez. Javier, what, what are you trying to say?
Yeah, I just got a notification that that's how the plans examiner does stamp his plans, so the plans are adequate for ISD purposes. But if Katie thinks that should be deferred to update them or specify anything, that's, that's up to boards. Yeah. So, yeah, sorry, to clarify on that point, there, there's going to be no change to the existing structure. We're just looking to put in flooring and walls essentially. So.
Are there, but even that's hard to tell from the plans. Are there dormers proposed or are those existing?
No, they're existing.
I got four dorms already in the house for, since they built the house. Everything is ready. Where is, I just make that right there so they could, they can see the dorm, the, the way they look. But we don't do any, nothing structural. It's just insulation and drywall and electrical and plumbing. That's it. Nothing had to be let up. Everything is.
What would be useful? Would it be useful for them to take a picture of their, because I think the, the challenges, the drawings are kind of, I, I mean, as BPDA is also indicating there, they, they, they would like to see more adequate plans as well. I mean, would it be helpful to show images of the current situation so that we can see that nothing is changing other than the interior or what would be useful?
Yeah, I think existing and proposed plans, just to show what's changing, things like that, so. You know, just, yeah, I think just the level of detail and information is not within the plans. You know, we need to see existing, propose, label it. I'm not sure whether you know, plans without an architect's stamp are allowed. And I know just in my day job, we look for that. I don't know if the same translates here. I don't want to give you the wrong information.
Javier, do you know, you know, does Jeff normally connect with folks who have these kinds of questions as well, or is it more back to ISD?
Yeah, I'm not sure Jeff personally connects, but.
Or someone from BPDA.
Yeah. I can't specify their policies if they've done it before, but while we can defer to get updated plans and then we can connect them to BP.
Well, I think that's the direction we're going in, but I don't want, I don't want to defer and not provide useful information to Mr. Rodriguez so that he can provide what we are considering adequate plans. So I just want to make sure there is a, either an ISD or BPD colleague who can, you know, walk them through that.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I can just restate what the BPDA gave if, you know.
I'm not, I'm not sure that's that helpful to them.
Well, it says documentation of existing and proposed conditions, so I also found that lacking, so could they provide existing and proposed floor plans for this space and label them as such?
There will be no change to the floor plan whatsoever.
Well, I think, I think, Mr. Rodriguez, what I'm hearing is that we're uncomfortable supporting it at this time and are, and are asking if you could share, if you could share photos of the before and after and anything else that would be useful. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to defer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. We will.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Javier, could you give them a new date?
Yes, manager. For another subcommittee here, we could do July twentieth. Do you think that's enough time?
Is, is that enough time, Mr. Rodriguez?
We're honestly, we're, we're not sure what what that process would entail, whatever, what it's looking for there, so.
Well, I think Ms. We will has tried to articulate as clearly as possible what, what would be useful, so I'm not sure if ISD.
Understandably, I'm just not, not sure what we actually need to do on our end, so the time that's going to just to figure out what we need to do, plus.
Madam Chair, I think we're we're also being tasked with confirming the occupancy as a two-family, so I think that is another piece of.
That has been confirmed by, by the city already.
It's on our appeal list, so I would just hopefully connect with someone at the BPDA.
We did go through every single step and there has to be no issues so far.
Well, so I'm going to pause because we've already voted, so I'm going to ask Javier if you offline can connect with BPDA and then connect someone to Mr. Rodriguez and we, so we can move on.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, that sounds fine.
Thank you. So Javier will connect with you, Mr. Rodriguez, after this. Mr. Stembridge, next case.
Next case is BOA one four five zero nine two three. The address is sixty Sirdan Avenue. Is the, is the applicant and or their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Marancy, business address of one sixty-eight H Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is Sean McMahon, who is the owner. What is in front of us, we have a proposal for a dirt floor addition. Basically squaring up the entire dirt floor. The height is going to remain existing at thirty-five feet, but we're increasing the stories from two and a half stories to, to three stories, and that's what the violation is for here today. The addition will add an approximately two hundred and ten square feet. At that point, I'm going to pause for any questions from the board.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Oh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to point out, I did have a hard time with this one, just only because they're mislabeled the elevations, but once I figured out what was going on, it was fine. I just don't know if anyone will, the rear and the side were mislabeled, so. I was like, the width isn't quite matching up here, but.
Yeah, so I think, Mrs. We will, as you could see that, if you, if you, on this drawing here, if you kind of just scroll down, where the, where the, where the discrepancy was, is that on the left-hand side, it says rare elevation. That's actually the side elevation, so those should have been just flip-flopped there. So the rare elevation is, is what is on the back, on the right-hand side, bottom right. So just the, I think it was an administrative error. There was a change in Mr. Chu's office that the architect that was working on these plans had suddenly departed Chu's office. But that was something we did pick up during the process, and I did make that clear as we were going through as well.
No worries, it happens.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Yes. Sorry.
Oops, sorry, Dan Hudson from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. April eighteenth, we had our butters meeting here. There were no objections this past the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council later that month unanimously. At this time, we're at defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Sorry, Francis, any other reasons?
There's a raised hand, I believe, is for the previous case, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I double check just to be sure?
Sure.
Thank you. Hi, Richard, you've been unmuted. Are you here for? Richard? Yeah, he's still having issues. Richard? Yeah, I'll just ask him to email. No other raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms., Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. We will.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA. Next, we have case BOA seven-nine-eight-seven-one-eight. The address is thirty-eight Hardwick Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present?
I see Mr. McAvoy walking. Karen? Karen?
Hello, sorry.
Hi, your case is up. Can you?
Oh, sorry.
introduce yourself and, and walk us through the proposal?
Sorry, my, uh, name's Kiran McAvoy. I live, uh, thirty-eight Hardwick Street, Brighton. Uh, currently a single-family three-bedroom. I'm looking to dorm or the back of it to create an extra bedroom, bathroom, and office slash slash bedroom, so, um, it would be two bedrooms in the top floor with a bathroom. One of the bedrooms would be an office for now.
Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Uh, yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, Austin-Brighton liaison. Uh, here to testify to, uh, the applicant's community engagement process. We had them reach out to both their Butters, as well as the local civic association, the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association, uh, which did vote in support of the proposal before you. As always, we will defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other raised hands, Madam Chair? Thank you. Uh, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion. Motion to approve, motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Uh, I'll second that, but may I add the proviso for a designer view? If necessary.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Motion to approve with BPAs designer view.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. We will?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one-four-four six-two-three-six. The address being one fifty-two to one fifty-four Brayton Road. Is the applicant and or their representative present?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, all. Uh, this is Kyle Marty from KM Construction, uh, presenting for one fifty-two, one fifty-four Brayton Road. Uh, the proposed project consists of creating a master suite in the attic, kitchen and bathroom renovation on the second floor, and closing the front porch to make a sunroom, demoing and constructing the new front exterior stairway, and adding two dormers. Uh, the violations for this proposed projects uh, is a number of allowed stories has been exceeded. There's currently two and a half, which is the max. Uh, the insufficient lot width, which is fifty feet required. The existing is forty-five feet. Uh, insufficient side yard setback, ten feet is required. There is existing of six-point-one feet. And insufficient front yard setback, twenty feet is required, and we have twelve-point-six feet. Um, and that is the, uh, scope of the work.
And can you confirm, uh, the violations you just mentioned? Some of those are pre-existing conditions, or are you adding to, adding to it?
Uh, they're pre-existing. Uh, the, uh, number of allowed stories, insufficient lot width, side yard setback, and a front yard setback.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, members of the board. Good afternoon again. Frank Mendoza with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, Austin-Brighton liaison, here to testify to the applicant's community engagement process. We did have them reach out to Butters, as well as the local civic group. Again, Brighton-Austin Improvement Association, which also voted to support the, the proposal before you. With that said, we will, as always, defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands, Madam Chair? Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
As we will?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thanks, all.
Before we move on to the rediscussion, um, you'll ask if there is anyone present to represent thirty-nine Vernon Street?
Doesn't sound like it.
Okay.
Madam Chair, this time, I would just suggest to, uh, final motion for, if you want.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to, um, file.
Deny without prejudice.
Deny, deny without prejudice.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
As we will?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Next, we will go to the rediscussions. And we have two companion cases. First being case BOA one-three-four zero-one-nine-eight with the address of one oh nine to one oh nine A Salem Street. With that, we have case BOA one-three-four zero-two-zero-four. The address being one, one-eleven to one-eleven A Salem Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present?
Hi, um, Madam Chair and members of the board, my name is Joe Bono, owner and operator of El Dente one oh nine Salem Street and Beneventos one eleven Salem Street. Respectfully request your full support to the following proposals. One oh nine Salem Street to amend our seating capacity from thirty-six patrons to forty-nine. No work to be done, no changes of hours of operation affected on the neighborhood or traffic. One eleven Salem Street to amend our seating capacity from forty patrons to sixty patrons, including a lower level. No work to be done, no changes of hour operation, and no adverse effect on the neighborhood or, uh, traffic. We receive full support from North End Waterfront Residence Association, North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council, and no opposition from our Butters. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office deferred to the judgment of this board. Our office can concur that, uh, we're unaware of any opposition or concerns from a Butters. Our office held a Butters meeting on, uh, June thirteenth. Uh, the applicant went on to meet with, uh, Nura and Nunic, uh, which both opted to support this proposal. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
No raised hands, Madam Chair. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve with the proviso that no building code relief be granted.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
As we will?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. I think that's it.
So do.
Thank you. All right. Have a good night.